Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the May 22nd County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, Craig is in the front here and he could assist you with that. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission minutes from April 15th, or excuse me, May 15th, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Second, any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid amount of $330,113.35.
Pay the bills.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, comments?
Madam Chair, I noticed in today's bills that we had 25 charges of $200 for deceit and transfer, $5,000. Otherwise our bills are not really too bad today.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Public Defender's Office final 2017 annual report and that is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is a special action to approve the conversion of one vacant deputy state's attorney position.
Good morning, Genetics with Human Resources. Our request this morning is really, has two components. One is to take one of Aaron's vacant deputy state's attorney positions and convert that into a senior trial attorney position. The second then is to hire former employee Crystal Johnson back into that position at a pay grade 23, step 16. One of the reasons for this request is the growth in homicide and serious felony cases that Aaron's office has had. And Crystal, as you know, is a former state's attorney employee. She's got 10 years in the office. Additionally, she's got judicial experience. So that would be some of the reasons for our requests. Aaron also outlined some of the other qualifications that Crystal would bring to this position in his briefing memo to you. I know Aaron is here this morning. If you have any questions, otherwise, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Aaron, did you have a comment for us?
Briefly, thank you, Commissioner. Aaron McGowan, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. This would just be a great opportunity for our office to get Crystal back, as outlined in the memo. She has vast experience. She's really a specialized prosecutor handling a lot of our child rape cases and homicides. She was second chair on my McVeigh Capital Murder case. An opportunity to have a sitting judge come back as a prosecutor is very unique. To Crystal's credit, it's my understanding that she believes that she can just have more of an impact in this community as an advocate, as a prosecutor, more so than she did on the bench. And she's been a great judge for this circuit, but this is a unique opportunity and I'd really encourage your support for it. Thank you.
Any questions for Aaron?
Would make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Item number six is abatements recommended for approval. Olivia, we're going to do these in three different groups, so we'll do A, B, and C first.
First, we have Janel Hansel, RDID 16200, 2015 property taxes in the amount of $66.30. Then we have 2016 property taxes in the amount of $59.73. And then 2017 property taxes in the amount of $57.32.
And those are all the same RDI number. If there's any, no questions, I'd look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Go ahead.
So move.
Somebody, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Then we have item D.
Item D is Brandon Valley School District, tax exempt, RDID 20573, 2017 property taxes in the amount of $2,351.51.
Turn motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And the last one is item E.
Item E is for an elderly freeze. It's RDID 56259, 2017 property taxes in the amount of $924.73.
Turn motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is notices and requests, there are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is DPNO number 47089 in the amount of $1,359.78. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. Before you, in this DPNO, 47086, in the amount of $1,359.78, represents poor relief for The public defender fees in the amount, and public defender fees in the amount of $662.80. The fees recorded between June 2012 and May 2017, under both the name of the petitioner and his ex-spouse. All the fees in that period were verified by the commission office. Supporting documents show that the ex-spouse alone applied for the poor relief and legal representation in that period. The petitioner is requesting that his name be removed from the joint lien with no payment and that the lien remain in full against his ex-spouse. However, he is willing to pay $210, or half of the poor relief, in the amount of $420, recorded in 2012, because they were not officially separated at that time. He expressed in his narrative that he was living in the Rapid City area in 2012 and has submitted a portion of a credit report and pay stub to show the addresses. He states that he was unaware that she had applied for poor relief or that the lien existed after it had been paid off in 2003, and believes he should not be responsible for the lien because the fees were incurred by his ex-wife after he left. And as part of the divorce stipulation agreement, both parties are solely responsible for any debt he or she has incurred since their separation, July 1st, 2014. They have now been divorced since December 29, 2016. The petitioner is not available, he is in Rapid City.
Okay. Questions for Melinda? Comments?
I would ask the state's attorney, you know, just because you're separated doesn't mean you've given up that legal responsibility, right? I mean, until you're actually divorced, you're still a unit.
That's correct. And there, I think the dates are in front of you. So while there was a separation, that is absolutely correct, there's still responsibility. And I would just direct the commission to the statute that was provided, as far as the language of the statute, which provides, let me just pull it up here. There's a reference in the statute regarding both spouses being shown as, in connection with the lien. I would, is there any other comments? I would suggest accepting his offer $250 of paying half of his poor relief and putting the rest on the ex-spouse. The public defender fees are her fees and he is paying half of the poor relief, which wasn't even, he didn't even apply for it.
That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next, we have DPNO number 79807, the amount of $17,495.46. Melinda.
This DPNO represents legal fees, recorded from October 2012 to April 2016. All the fees in that period were verified by the commission office. Supporting documents show that the lien alone applied for the legal representation. The petitioner is requesting that the lien be compromised in full upon payment of $850. He expressed in his narrative that he and his wife have an opportunity to purchase a home from his wife's aunt in the amount of $178,596. And that she also is contributing a $2,192.06 gift of equity and $10,000 gift toward the home purchase. They are scheduled to close on June 5th, 2018. Their 2017 taxable income was $58,207 with a refund of $2,079. Listed assets equal $27,984. And liabilities equal at least $2,059.50 per month. The petitioner and his wife are available. If you have any additional questions.
Any questions for Melinda? Okay. And the petitioner is here and I spoke to you ahead of time, so you know what you can do. You don't have to speak, you don't have to stand, you don't have to identify yourself. If you would like to say something, you can. Just speak loudly so we can hear you.
Okay.
And you can stay in your chair or stand, you don't have to stand.
All right. Well, I'm here today just to, you know, show some accountability and at the same time to kind of share, you know, the importance on us really trying to provide a home, stable home for our kids. And just growing up in a bigger city, I was homeless for a while, so it's always been one of my personal goals to overcome that cycle of homelessness in my family. And also try to, like I said, make the lens and do what I have to do to move forward.
Thank you.
We also want to note that she who got her net worth several years ago, he's been with minimal income. We did provide copies of the tax filings for the past several years. We gave some documentation on, like, we can provide additional documentation on his injuries and his lack of ability to work the jobs he had before, which left him unemployed for quite a while.
We did get to review all those documents. Those are part of our package, so we did get to read everything. So are there any questions of the applicants?
Well, Madam Chair, I would just say that $17,000 is a pretty significant amount and that, you know, our attorneys actually work for us at a pretty discounted rate compared to, you know, what they would prefer to charge anyway. It's, as representing 180,000 people here, we, who are owed money, it's difficult for us to just completely forgive it. I believe that we're owed somewhere in the nature, in the area of $49 million by people throughout the community. And we have people standing in line to get additional benefits from us. So we have to do our very best to try to collect as much as we can. That's my comment anyway.
Additional comments? I have a comment when we're done. Did you want me to comment?
Formulating.
I would be in support of compromising this for the amount of $850 after reading all the information that was provided for us. We'll be putting a family in a home who will be paying taxes and becoming a contributing part of our society. And we are here to help people who have been through a lot. And I think that is part of our responsibility. And like I said, after reading, we read a lot of people's lives and sometimes it's, you realize that this has been a very, very difficult situation. And I think that it is in our best interest to put their family in a home. Commissioner.
If I could, Madam Chair. Question addressed to the applicant. I notice that your current address is the address of the home that you're buying and there's some family circumstances there. If you're not able to purchase the home, will it be sold out from under you?
It will. She's due to close on her new home. See, we started this process in February, but we had to resolve a little bit of credit card debt in order to qualify. So that's the reason why it got delayed a couple of months. And she needs to close on her home in order to...
For you, okay. Well, that changes the way I'm thinking and I, as much as I agree with Commissioner Barthon, you know, the debt to the county, the circumstances, we have to consider each individually. And I would make the motion to compromise the lien for the 800 and, how much were we talking?
Eight fifty.
Eight, okay, for the amount offered.
Commissioner Benega?
I'll second that, but I also have a comment. It appears that when I review the case issues, that there are two files involved here. One that was for $13,452 and that case was acquitted, as I understand, reading this. So there was no charges, but we had the cost, which unfortunately, that decision maybe, should have been made before. But anyhow, the second one, that is the balance of $4,000 plus some change, is really the, as far as I'm concerned, the biggest part of this clearing of the lien. And we usually settle those for somewhere around 50%, but I understand, looking at your financial circumstances, that frankly, that's the cash that you have available. So I, because of that, I will second and vote in favor of that, only because I think that the acquittal says a lot about our investment that wasn't a good one.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, I'm also going to vote in favor of this, but I also think that it's important for people to understand the burden that we bear as a county with people coming to us for assistance. And I would say to those that are out in the community right now, that we appreciate it when you make small payments every now and then, even if it's like 20 bucks twice a year, we would be happy to see that good faith effort. And getting people back on the roles of paying taxes is a good thing for everyone in our county and having a safe place for a family is a good thing also.
Yes, it is. I have a motion and a second to approve the compromise of lien for the payment of $850. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. If you have questions, you can talk to Melinda.
Thank you.
Yep. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak? We give you five minutes and ask you to identify yourself.
Oh, brother, not that deal. I was told I had about 30 minutes, so. Paul Tenhaken, one weekend on the mayor's job, and thank you Commissioners for letting me come and address you this morning. Really, the goal of me being here is just to say hello. And I look forward to a strong working relationship with each of you. Had the chance two weeks ago to go meet with the Lincoln County Commission, your colleagues there, and looking forward to a strong level of collaboration with the county. Commissioner Heidberger and I had lunch last week to talk about what that could look like. And so the initiatives that are going to be very important to me, as I've taken office and had a lot of meetings about these, continue to be the ones that I campaigned strongly on, and that is our narcotics challenges in the city. Thus, the triage project that is a joint project with the county and other partners. I'm going to be very supportive of that initiative. The workforce challenges that we face in our city, and really our region, and really our state, are going to be very important to me as well. We have the final innings going on of our next Sioux Falls Development Foundation president. We interviewed the final two candidates last week, and so very excited at the quality of those two candidates. And a big part of our development foundation is workforce development and economic development opportunities. And so I'm excited about those two candidates and working closely with whichever one they choose. And then the third issue that is going to be very important to me is increased communication and collaboration from the mayor's office with people like the commission, people like our peer cities, Hartford and Harrisburg and T and Dell Rapids and many of the communities you all represent. I just named last week what I'm calling a deputy chief of staff, an elevated communications position in the mayor's office. And the role of that person is to ensure that we're communicating properly out of the mayor's office, the right frequency, the right information. And so I just want to extend an offer to you. If there's information you need from the city to do your job better, you let us know. And you let myself know, TJ Nelson is his name, you let him know. We want to be as open and transparent with any information we have to help you all do your jobs better. And so that's all I wanted to say today was I know most of you, in fact, all of you personally, thank you for serving and I look forward to working with you more closely in the years ahead. So thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I'd just like to comment, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being here. Having one working lunch with the chair of the county commission ties you with the eight year record of your predecessor.
It exceeds.
So I really am excited about the idea of increased communication.
Well, I look forward to it. And that lunch was initiated by Cindy, but I would love to have lunch with each of you, especially if you guys are buying, then I'm all in. Because I'm, so, but you will see and hear from me probably more than you're historically used to from the mayor's office, because when Minnehaha County wins, Sioux Falls wins, and that's kind of the approach by which I'm approaching this office, so thank you.
If I may, look forward to seeing you at the joint meetings once a month at least.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Absolutely. I know the mayor's office hasn't been well represented at those, but yes, I do plan to make those.
I would just say welcome and thank you for making the extra efforts to be here at the very beginning of your career. And we look forward to a partnership because the problems that we have are community partners, not city, county, or political. So I'm glad that we can work together to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Great. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Enjoy your day. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at public comment?
Nope. You are to come. Okay, with that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make just one other little comment here, which is that I've heard that sometimes the microphones, when people are speaking, they're speaking our way and so other people in the room don't hear very well. So we should make sure people in public comment or doing testimony of any kind are sure using that podium's microphone.
Okay. We have no further public comments. Everything else is on the agenda for today. Next, we'll move on to the routine business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider application for special events on sale liquor license for Prairie Pasta Incorporated for a wedding on June 16th at the Riviera Events Hall. Olivia?
Yes, as you stated, this is a on-sale liquor license for Prairie Pasta, Inc. They'll be catering liquor for a wedding on June 16th at the Riviera, and I've received no concerns or objections from the state's attorney's office, planning and zoning, or sheriff's office.
This is a public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support or opposed to this license? No one's moving, so I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve this application for...
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is also a public hearing to consider an application for special events on sale wine retail license for the Sioux Land Renaissance Association for the festival on June 9 and 10 at the WH Lions Fairground. Olivia?
Yes, this is also a special event license. This one is for on-sale retail wine to take place at the Sioux Land Renaissance Festival, and I've received no concerns or complaints on this one either, and I believe somebody is here to speak today.
And again, it's public comment, so if you would like to come and give your support.
You may know me as Anna Voorhees, but I am Lady Anne Cook Bacon when I dress thusly. And tis most important that we have our mead maker in attendance at our festival. And without the county commission's permission, we cannot do so. It is an inherent part of our culture, for we do not know that water carries things that are unsafe. And unlike your county, that has safe water to drink, we must put alcohol in it in order that we drink safely. We don't require everyone to drink, however. We do invite anyone who would like to come and visit us and see how said wine license is used to attend us at the fairgrounds, 9th and 10th of June.
Thank you. Is there anyone who is opposed? Nope. Motion?
Bring on the mead. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 12 is also a public hearing. A public hearing and second reading for the rezoning request of number 18-03 from A1 Agricultural District to C Commercial District. Scott. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. I sort of feel like I'm following two tough acts, but, so today we have a rezoning request, 1803. This is a request to rezone approximately 2.36 acres from A1 Agriculture to C Commercial District. It's located at the Baltic Exit on the east side of Interstate 29, and the applicant has indicated that they would like to use the property for future commercial development. This was before the planning commission on April 23rd, and they unanimously recommended approval, and I've included those minutes for your review. I can show you generally, if you want to go through the, we'll just quickly look at the parcel here. This, you can see Interstate 29 and the exit. This is a vacant piece of property and it's adjacent to some existing commercial development. I would be glad to answer any questions that you have, but this is, it fits into our Invision 2035 comprehensive plan. And it's more than likely that any future use that would occur on there would come back to the planning commission for a conditional use permit review. And we would be able to look at the specific site details of any future requests, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Any questions for Scott? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of this change from A1 to C? Is there anyone who would like to speak against it? Then I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is a public hearing and second reading for rezoning request number 18-04 from A1 Agricultural to Commercial District. Scott?
Yes, once again, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. This request, today's a public hearing on rezoning request 18-04. This is to rezone approximately 1.67 acres from A1 Agriculture to the C Commercial District. Generally, this property is located at the Crooks Exit off of Interstate 29. And once again, the applicant has indicated that they will use this site for future commercial development. It was before the planning commission for a public hearing on April 23rd. And also, that, at that meeting, the planning commission recommended unanimously to approve the rezoning request. It does fit within our Invision 2035 plan for commercial development at interstate interchanges. I will show you the parcel here generally. You can see it is adjacent to already existing commercial development. And on the other side of the interstate, there's extensive commercial and industrial development, so it sort of is an expansion of what's already occurring out at that site. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, and I know the applicant's here in the audience too, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions for Scott? Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone who would like to speak in support? Nobody wants to? Anybody wants to speak against it? Okay.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion with a comment.
A motion to approve?
Approve, yeah.
I'm assuming, a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second with a comment?
Both of these obviously happen right on interstate interchanges, not interchanges, but exits. And that is part of the plan. And so people that own, you know, stuff nearby, these kinds of places have to be ready for who knows what might need to go, you know, it could be a hotel. Mr. T. Hart's got several of the other parcels on that side of the road already and has done a fine job of doing them. There is a house, I believe, still on that property, and that'll be eventually gone.
Which will also take away the building eligibility on that site, so. If there are no more comments, I'd look for, I have a motion, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And I think that goes in the record book for doing four public hearings in record time. Never dumb them that fast. Okay. Item number 14 is a brief presentation on the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Cory?
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm Cory Beatty, the director of the Sioux Falls Humane Society, and this is Andy A. Strike, our senior humane officer. We just wanted to talk a little bit today about really what we do with the county. It's a busy time out there, especially now. So, you know, we just kind of put together a really quick sort of PowerPoint to tell you exactly what we do, so. Am I moving this, or are you? So basically, we are a nonprofit organization. We're not affiliated with any national groups. We're not affiliated with any other shelters in the United States. We are just our own local shelter. So we take in between... So, we take in between 8,000 and 10,000 animals a year. We have, right now, we're gaining a lot of volunteers, which is just so wonderful. We really rely on them to do a lot of things for us. They foster animals for us when we need it, they help us with community education projects, fundraisers, things like that. As far as daily intakes, what we do for the county, and I think Andy can speak to this probably better than I could, but we have a lot of people who are out in the county who have animals that they have to surrender. We have people who have stray animals, we get them from the field, we get them from over the counter, we have a night receiving area that we built a few years ago, that we have animals come in at nighttime, when people cannot give us animals in the day. We also help children's in, so if anybody goes to children's inn and they have animals that need to be taken care of, we do take those in for them, and do that at no charge. Abandonments, same thing. Out in the county, sometimes people will just move and they'll leave their animals there, some people will report them, and Andy and her crew will go out and get them safely and bring them back to us, and hopefully we can get them up for adoption at some point. You know, as far as legal cases and things like that, we have to watch out very carefully for that also, if there's any neglect or abuse. One of the biggest things that we've done, and I think a lot of people really even don't know about it yet, is in our strategic plan this year, we are being extremely aggressive, and trying to raise a lot of money for this, because it takes about a half a million dollars a year, but we have a span neuter program, where we're trying to get every single animal that comes into our midst fixed before they go back out again. That will help with the control of the population, but also will help us to make sure that if people lose their animals, they're all microchipped also before they go out, so that we can find them faster and get them back to their families. Rabies, I'll let Andy talk about that.
Well, we...
Can you use the microphone?
We kind of got in place now that any animal that's adopted from us has its rabies vaccination, so we're in compliance with the county ordinance, and that's something that we felt was really important. And I got to tell you, and I'm going to stray a little bit, but here, seems like lately everything that comes in that building is broken. But, you know, the healing process started, the dog on the right had a leg that was just shattered, and she is doing super, super great right now, she's a three-legged dog, and thanks to the funding that we have, we were able to do that, our veterinarian there at the shelter. And every day is a new adventure at that place, but you know what? I love my job, and Cory does too, because we feel like we're doing something for the community. And I also have to say, we have a wonderful, warm community. They are so supportive. We got good people in this county.
Thank you.
These were some animals removed, as you can see, the living conditions were deplorable, and the dogs on the left, there was 11 of them, 12, one being deceased, and you don't think that happens in this area, but it does. And thank God, again, the community reaches out and lets us know that this is going on. They're the angels, they're the ones that call us. And the dog on the right, that poor guy, I'll tell you what, he gained, I think, 33 pounds, nice-looking dog.
So, as Andy said, we do a lot of things that are really good for the animals in the community. We try very hard with our staff, we have a wonderful team up there, and a good team in place to help us with all these things. We do appreciate all the help that we get from the State's Attorney's Office. We have had to use them often, and we do appreciate everything that they've ever done for us. It's hard to go out there and say, "We're taking care of animals," when something happens to them that's not good, and we need that support to be able to have a voice for them. So, the humane officers that we have, we have three that go out, and they are pretty much all over the place. We have 21 contracts that we do, they work with neglect cases, cruelty cases, they go out and just basically pick up animals that have lost their way. So, when any findings are warranted, again, we work with the State's Attorney's Office and appreciate, more than anything, what they do for us. One of the coolest things we've done lately, and we love it, is the Big Paws K9 Partnership. So what we're doing now is, we have a really good relationship with the South Dakota State Penitentiary. We have had for 20 years now, Perol pups is what it's called, it's a program up there that is, has been going along for many years. Kind of unruly dogs that get to go up there, and they get to be one-on-one with an inmate to get some very basic skills, so that they're adoptable into homes. So that's worked very well for us, but this is a new program, and we're now training service dogs for veterans. So, and they are shelter animals, so animals who are in the shelter that maybe aren't getting adopted, but they have a job to do and want to do a job. We are partnering up with the Big Paws K9 Foundation and working with them. We also do national search and rescue dogs. We've sent out 13 now to deploy in various areas of the country, which is really cool, we love to tell about that. These two on the right are partners in crime. We have Bruce Lee on the right and Sasha on the left. They are American Bulldogs, which are, right now, learning a lot of tricks and a lot of things, bringing medicine to veterans, helping them walk, do various things like that. So they are getting out into the community now, and they go through a pretty long training process, so that's kind of a neat program we're doing.
I got to add to that, the naughtyest dogs make the best service dogs. If you go through the shelter and you look for the one that's just amping it up, they need a job, and once they, but I'm going to tell you, the naughty ones make great service dogs.
So, Perol pups, again, rehabilitating the ill-behaved dogs so that they can get adoption. You know, we try to be as cost-effective as we can, we have to be, because we rely totally on public funding, and I think that we do a lot of fundraisers, you see us in the community doing all kinds of things most of the time. Again, we hold the 21 contracts outside of the city of Sioux Falls, we do take care of all the city of Sioux Falls animals also, but with the contract with the county, we've been lucky enough to be able to have relationships with a lot of cities and, you know, smaller groups of people that we're helping make sure that they get their animals vaccinated, things like that, so that they're safe in the community. But our largest income really is fundraising, we also provide a lot of community education. We have a kids' club that we bring in the kids and do things with animals. We do a lot of rabies and bite education for the kids, you know, what to do if you see an animal coming around you, you know, not running, and making sure that they are not getting bit and things, so. But adoptions make up about 3% really of all of our income. And the largest costs are span neuter, of course, and then medical. When people bring in their animals, they normally can't afford to pay for them, so that's why they end up getting them. I wish we could figure out a way, and hopefully we can work towards this, is, you know, when people not giving up their animals and to somehow help them with some medical issues that they may not be able to do with this, you know, theirselves. The long-term fund development plan, we do do a lot of estate planning, we do bequests, things like that, so people are aware that if they want to give to the animals, that they could do that through various different ways. We work hard at trying to make sure that people understand that we are a no-kill shelter. That's something I think has been a really, kind of a weird rumor that's gone around for years, and so, just so that the county knows also that we are a no-kill shelter. That doesn't mean that euthanasia is not available, because we have to have that in order to be humane. There are animals who are, come into our midst who are, you know, not healthy enough or maybe injured, you know, that cannot make it and cannot be adopted out, and we have to do that too. One of the toughest parts of our job, I think, so. But we do want to make sure that everybody does know that we do everything that we can to make sure that those kids get out there and get adopted again, and become parts of families, and make their lives better.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Bird?
Do you have a lot of animals right now that in need of adoption?
We do. We usually run about, I don't know, right now it's almost cat season, is what we call it. We usually get up to four, well, right around 400 cats, 500 cats usually during the summer season. Dogs, they probably stay about 200 usually, so, you know, we have a big capacity up there. Thank goodness, we did a remodel a couple of years ago, and we're probably going to be ready to do another one here soon, if we can raise the money. So it's not going to get any, you know, smaller, I'm sure, and with people adding family members, they also add for kids, so we want to make sure we're ready for that also, so.
Anybody who wants to foster right now, we have a lot of cute kids.
Lots of jobs for you. Right. So yes, we do have a lot, so.
Additional...
But we're very successful at it also, so it's nice to see that, which is good. People love animals, and they want to adopt them, so.
Anything else? Thank you, thank you for coming and presenting this, yes.
Appreciate it very much.
Item number 15 is a presentation by the Family Visitation Center Services. Now it's your turn. Get to come and identify yourselves and give your address. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Carol Wolter with the Family Visitation Center, and with me, I have Abraham Knopf. Luke Koma was going to make this presentation, but he had a family issue he had to take care of, so you get me. And I just, we just wanted to have a couple minutes before you to tell you how thankful we are for Minnehaha County's support of what we do at Family Visitation Center. You help, your funding is a tremendous help in funding the gap between the fees that we collect from families and what it actually costs. We are, we are very busy in, about 18 months ago, we were working with an average of about 50 families a week, and right now, we're working with 130-plus, so that represents 250 to 300 kids a week coming in and out of our doors. Of the kids that we see, the referrals that we get from Child Protection Services, about 90% of those have some drug issues that are leading to it, the primary one is methamphetamines of our, what we call private pay, it's 50 to 60% of them. Right now, of the 130 families that we're working with, roughly 60% of those are child protection, and 40% are private pay families. And to just give you an idea, we were typically getting five to eight referrals a month from Child Protection Services. In April, we had over 30. And in a typical month, we would have two to three new private pay families start using our services. In April, we had eight families, and so your funding is critically important to us, and we can't thank you enough for that support, and are just very, very thankful to have the support of the Commissioners, and that's basically what we just wanted to come before you and say thank you, and unfortunately, the needs not getting less, so even this year, I just have some statistics, private pay, we were working with 42 kids in the month of January, in the month of April, we were working with 79 kids, and that's just the private pay in this county, so. Anyway, just want to say thank you, and if you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Any questions for Carol? Commissioner Bennigan?
Carol, I don't remember, but do you work with CASA at all when they go through the child protection process?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do, and the CASA workers, we work closely with CASA, the workers come in, and we have, with our new technology, the CASA workers can either watch the visit live time and listen to the visit live time on a computer upstairs, or if they're not able with their, you know, because these are volunteer workers, and if they're not able to come in at the time that the visit is going on, they just call and say, "Can I watch the visit?" We have them all recorded, so then they can come in and watch it, and it's, that's extremely helpful to them as they evaluate what's going on in the family, so it's very good.
I have one other question. Have the staff of Child Protection Services grown in the employee-related issues?
I'm not sure what's going on over there in terms of their in-number, you mean?
Right.
I'm not sure, we see new ones every so often, so I don't know if that means they're increasing their staff or replacing others, I can't really answer that, but they're, it's the drug issue that you hear so much about is definitely very real, and we definitely see it in the work that we're doing. So, thank you so much for your support, it's hugely important to us.
The children are the victims that no one sees, while somebody does see them, but those victims of that drug use that are not forgotten, but forgotten by maybe the main population that, you know, we're locking them up and try to clean up their parents, but it's the kids that are left behind to, for us to try to straighten out their lives and hope that they don't continue in those paths. Very traumatic for them.
Right, and they, I mean, they, regardless of what their parents have done or what they've witnessed, it's still their mom, and it's still their dad, and they want to see them. And they really, for some of those kids, it's all they've known, one little boy who visits, his mom and dad have, their situation is such that they can't visit him on the same day, so he visits his mom on Monday, and his dad on Wednesday, and in different rooms, and he was going upstairs from visiting his mom, and went, we have four visit rooms, and he went past one of the other visit rooms, and he said, "That's where my dad lives." And that's reality to him, and it's where he sees his parents, so he thinks that's where they live, so. Anyway, thank you so much for your time, but thank you even more for your support.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you, Carol, for coming, thank you, Abram, for coming too. Item number 16 is consider a bid award recommendation and authorize the Chairman to sign an agreement for two hydraulic systems in dump bodies. Bids were opened on May 9th. DJ, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. We opened bids on May 9th for two of the hydraulic systems and dump bodies. We purchased the truck chassis that we will go, that will go on these earlier this year, and so we'll be putting together two snowplow trucks, hopefully sometime this early winter is when they should be done and fully delivered. The bids that we received were pretty good, really close to where we had estimated they would be, and 128,000, or just under 128,000 dollars for the two of them. If you have any questions, I can answer those, otherwise ask for your approval and signature on this bid awarding contract.
Questions for DJ? Motion?
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion is second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, DJ.
Thank you.
Item number 17 is a briefing on the 4H spring and summer programs. Chuck, good morning.
Good morning, Chuck Martinal, STSU Extension, Minnehaha County 4H, Minnehaha County Extension. I am going to go through this kind of brief summary of what we've been up to this spring. I know we met with you a few months ago, talked about the Water Festival, but I'm here now to talk about the 4H program and what we've been doing. Once again, the mission of 4H is to empower youth to learn through the caring partnerships of adults, so we utilize over 100 volunteers in our program for each of our services that we provide. Without our volunteers, we would not be able to fulfill this mission. So our spring programming here, we have really tackled three different areas. We've done our after-school programs, which traditionally are the YMCA programs, Juvenile Detention Center, which I throw after school, because they come in after their school hours, Boys and Girls Club, and LSS Care Program. These are spread throughout the county, so we are traveling from Hartford, we go up to Colton, over to Del Rapids, we're in Brandon, we're in Sioux Falls, so, you know, we try to spread our services out, not just focus on the Population Center, but to the whole entire county. In addition to that, we took part in our large events this year, so we helped plan the Water Festival, we helped plan the Egg Days at the Pavilion, we're all community partners in that planning, and we also took part in Women in Science this year for the first time, which is held at Southeast Tech, which involves right around 800 local school youth coming from all over this county, and Lincoln County, and a few from Moody County, so it's a pretty big event to get into. We were honored to come in and teach robotics during that day. The other thing we've been up to is school education. I just finished up about seven weeks of driving my car throughout the entire county. We do chicks in the classroom, which is a program where we bring in an incubator, we bring in one to two dozen eggs to each classroom in each school district that wants to do it, and we hatch eggs, which is a 21-day process, and we had 24 programs this year take part in it, our 24 classrooms, so I try to stagger things out so I don't have 200 chicks at one time. So, the other thing we started this year is STEM for homeschool youth, so that was So the other thing we started this year was STEM for homeschool youth, so that was a need in the county that was spoke to us by homeschool parents, that there is not STEM classes during the day. So we were able to offer that at no cost to right around forty, forty-five youth who took part in six months of class, class lessons. So that's a very good program, well, well-received. So kind of some of the recaps here, like I said before, the Water Festival, we, we took part in. The other things that we took part in that weren't mentioned is our 4H club from Colton came down to the Mary Jo Arboretum again this year and did a hands-on animal experience for about a thousand youth. So they come through and are able to learn about dairy cows, are able to learn about rabbits, swine, poultry, and actually see the animals up close and have a chance to handle them and see how they are handled. So it's not just a hamburger, they saw what the baby beef looks like that will eventually become a beef cow. We reached about three, second here, we reached about five thousand youth at our large events this year. So that's our Water Festival Egg Days, which is a pretty steady number for us. And once again, without that partnership, all those volunteers, Nathan and I are not reaching five thousand kids between the two of us. So we do require a little bit of help. The other cool thing here about chicks in the classroom is once these chicks are hatched in these classrooms, we had about six hundred and fifty students reach, but we also reached another set of kids because we give these chickens to 4H families to be raised as 4H projects. So these three hundred chickens we gave out this year will all be raised in 4H projects in some form, shape, way, form, or shape. They may not all make it to the fair, but we will see a good chunk of them at the fair this year. So it's kind of a neat thing because kids who had those chickens in the classrooms will come in and they'll see the label that this chicken came from, you know, Tri Valley, and they'll be like, wow, that does not look like a cute little cuddly chick anymore. It's not yellow, it's black. So it's kind of a nice little closure to that project for them too. All right. So the volunteer benefits of our program, we have a lot of volunteer hours with our youth. Our youth and our clubs go out and dedicate several hours. So far this year, we've dedicated just over nineteen hundred hours of volunteer service to the county, which is programs from cleaning up parks to visiting nursing homes to, oh, taking part in local youth events like the Arboretum. Yeah, we also this year had, were, was honored one of the two state award winners for the Prudential Spirit of the Community Award, which is Rhea Neff. So that was a wonderful surprise too. She does a project where she collects restaurant crams, melts them down, and then repurposes them to youth. So it's kind of a neat little program she's been doing. She's got countless hours into it. And she is collecting crans, so if you have, if you know anybody with used crans, you can send them to our office and we get them to her and she takes part and makes fun shapes out of them and just does a nice job with, once again, taking things that have been thrown away and finding a purpose for it. All right. Some of the trainings we've took apart here in this year is, one of the big ones was My Youth Prepariness. It's a two-time national award-winning program in which we will be running here this fall in the county. It's a program where we teach youth, high school-aged youth to prepare for emergencies and more for the aftermath of emergency, how to take part safely, how to be a valuable contributor to that. It's a nice program that also focuses on career exploration with that. So we, once again, trying to get youth into the volunteer fire departments and EMS-type services, so. The other thing we took part was Newell. Newell is National Urban Extension Leaders Caucus. We took them down to St. Louis, met with other urban areas, counties in this country that are similar to ours and which have the rural slash urban centers into and how they're mixing. And what we came away with it is we're actually doing fairly okay up here. Our programming is reaching a huge number of kids and we're actually ahead of the curve. So when you compare it to cities like Omaha and Des Moines, we're actually doing fairly well. Upcoming summer programs here, just because we switched from spring into summer, doesn't mean we stop. Once again, we'll have our 4H camps this year. We partnered with Pavilion to offer some of them. I'll be out in the Juvenile Detention Center again this year, doing the gardening program again. Junior leaders will be working at the banquet this year. We have several Ozabob programs, small little robots that we go out and teach kids about that, that STEM, get them drawn into, to the idea that technology is an important part of our future, so. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to, I brought in one of our junior leaders, while she will be leaving shortly because she's graduating. Kelsey Frost here would like to talk a little bit about the 4H program as well.
Kelsey, if you would just introduce yourself and then your address, please. Thank you.
Of course. My name is Kelsey Frost and I'm living in Brandon at the moment. Pardon me, I kind of have a cold, so my voice is not where it usually is. I'm just here to say a little bit about what 4H has done for me. I'm going on my eleventh year in 4H that I've been participating through and I just have some basic things that 4H has really given me as a 4H'er through that time period. One of the biggest things for me is that has given me leadership experience. I was the 4H president two times in my club, amidst other leadership roles. I have worked with the little children of my club as well as the older kids and trying to lead them through the process. I also got an amazing opportunity to further my leadership qualities by attending a national conference in DC, the 4H National Conference, where I worked with other youth of my age and we actually made a presentation on my specific roundtable to the Smithsonian Institute. So that was a big experience for me. And tying in with all that leadership through volunteer work and doing those opportunities, I've also gotten some teamwork aspects. Of course, school teaches you about teamwork when you have to work in projects, but I think it's something completely different when you're taking it on your own time and you're actually invested in the project. So for me, doing things like working with my club members on volunteer projects or even at these national conferences I have been to has allowed me to work with other youth that are passionate about the same things I am and giving me a totally unique experience regardless of where we come from. We have all came together to work as a team on these projects. And last I would like to talk about is giving me the opportunity to learn about public speaking. I've been doing public speaking through 4H since I was eight, so I'm very comfortable with it and has been one of my strong suits, thanks to 4H. I was actually just recently, on Sunday, when I graduated, the opening commencement speaker. And I will also be competing in St. Louis at a national rhetorical contest and I have the opportunity to go on to the world's contest the next day. So I've been given many opportunities because 4H has given me the basis to learn how to present myself and how to present my ideas to the world. So just a brief overview, it's given me leadership qualities, allowed me to work as a team with people that are passionate about the same things I am, and has also given me public speaking skills that help set me up for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. It was excellent. Impressed. Very good. Thank you. And good luck as you go to St. Louis and we'll keep our fingers crossed for the world.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Kelsey's just one of our examples of, of youth have done just a wonderful job. Kelsey is very humble in, in her, her, her rewards and things she's done over the years. She's also been, I went to DC again for our Citizen Washington Focus Trip as well. So she's just been a tremendous asset to the county and we will miss her when she goes off to college. So unfortunately, she had to graduate. Or maybe not.
At least she did.
She, there was no doubt about that.
Any questions for Chuck? Any questions for Kelsey? Did I cut you off, Chuck?
No, you didn't. Sorry, I kind of frogged my throat too today.
Appreciate you coming in and giving a report again on 4H and thank you for bringing, Kelsey. It's always nice to see, I don't want to say this negatively, but products of what we're doing. Thank you for what you've shared. That's great. It's very exciting to see. That's what we want.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen is authorize the chairman to sign the Minnehaha County 4H Advisory Salary Agreement with SDSU Extension. Chuck, and what a great way to follow it up.
Thanks to Melinda, so she does a wonderful job. Or Craig, I'm not, we'll give the credit to Melinda.
Is there, did you have anything to say about that? Are you looking it up?
I'm looking up any notes I had to put down here. So it was quite a process this year, the MOU. It was also cleaned up nicely between the, Maggie did a wonderful job cleaning it up with Tracy from the State's Office at SDSU. I think between the two groups, they got to an acceptable agreement between both sides. So once again, I want to give hats off both Maggie and up to Tracy. So just a pleasure to work with both of them.
Any questions for Chuck on that contract? For a motion to approve?
Move for approval. Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen is consider a motion to approve the Minnehaha County 4H Promotion and Expansion Committee roster. Good morning, Nathan.
Good morning. My name is Nathan Skadson, SDSU Extension 4H Youth Program Advisor for Minnehaha County. Part of my role in the county and the duties that Chuck and I share is to oversee our Promotion and Expansion Committee. The Promotion and Expansion Committee is a federal requirement for the 4H program. Every county in the United States has one. And the goal of the committee is to take a look at the overview of the 4H program to make sure that we are serving all the youth in the county. We aren't missing any populations or groups that are underserved. So part of that process is submitting a roster to the County Commission for Approval. The names are up there. Part of the, part of the makeup of the committee is that it's half 4H members and volunteers, half non-4H members and volunteers. And so one of the positions is always held for the current County Commission Liaison. And yeah, so we just need approval for that roster. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Nathan?
This roster.
Just a motion and?
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just make a comment about 4H in general. And, you know, I, I don't think we've given them an excess amount of resources and Chuck and his team have done a great job of making what little we gave them into a great operation and I really appreciate it.
Yes. It's been a struggle to get it up and going again after those significant cuts that they had quite a few years ago. But we have two guys who are working and dedicated and it has significantly grown. So thank you guys for the work that you do. Item number twenty is consider a motion to approve the 2018-19 malt beverage license renewal applications. Olivia?
Yes, we received, if I'm not counting incorrectly, twenty applications to renew malt beverage licenses. You will notice that there are some people missing off of the regular list. That's due to a legislative change, so the remainder will be coming next week, but I've received no concerns, complaints, or objections from State's Attorney, Sheriff's Office, or Planning and zoning.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign.
I have a question though, if I may. So Olivia, is Badlands or Housit's Racetrack one of those ones coming in at a later time?
It is not. Theirs is a liquor license, so that would be in October.
Motion passed unanimously to approve those malt beverage licenses. Item number twenty-one is authorize the chairman to sign and submit a request for an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Agreement 1112-302 to extend the grant period deadline from June thirtieth, 2018 to July thirty-first. Melinda?
Good morning, Melinda. Storey Commission Assistant. You may recall that the Commission approved a similar request on an amendment to extend the grant period ending April thirtieth to June thirtieth at the April twenty-fourth Commission Meeting. Southeast Tech had requested to apply the remaining $7,472 of Community Development Block Grant Funds to an upcoming Commercial Drivers License Training Class starting up April thirtieth and ending May twenty-third. Unfortunately, none of the students applied for the grant, so the funds were not utilized as anticipated. CDBG Grant Manager Paul Melhaff has spoken with the Course Administrator who assured him that they believe they can apply the funds to the next session that runs June fourth through June twenty-seventh, as they are expecting two applicants at a cost of $3,995 each. This is the last attempt to extend the grant agreement deadline. If the funds are not used at this time, they will be de-obligated from this program and applied to another state program. The action requested today is to extend the grant, the CDBG grant period deadline from June thirtieth to July thirty-first.
Questions for Melinda?
Approve.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
Item number two is a Community, Minnehaha County Commission Liaison reports. Are there any reports?
Madam Chair, I have invited Scott to come down and talk to us. We had a planning meeting last night and he has some other info as well to include an expanded family in the Planning Department.
Yes, last night, our planner, Kevin Hookman, diligently attended Planning Commission at eight-thirty and then went home at ten-thirty and his wife and he, he had a baby together. So a nice baby boy, all, all healthy. And so that was one of the items, but I also wanted to report last Thursday, Commissioner Barth asked me to attend East Dakota Water District on his behalf, and I did. And I happened to ask one of the members there, also on Friends of the Big Sioux, Dana Losky, about water testing, because we had, we're in a partnership together with doing some water testing at Wall Lake and I asked him when he was going to start doing that and he said, already did three of them and, and he said, they are all awesome. He said, it's just as good as tap water. And I, maybe a little bit of exaggeration, but very good results.
Just add a little alcohol.
Yeah, as Lady Bacon would tell you.
Yeah, that's right.
Then the other, the other item that I wanted to pass on to you was yesterday, late afternoon, I received resignation from Paul Cosbooth, from our Planning Commissioner, one of our Planning Commissioners. He has decided to leave the Planning Commission for personal reasons. And so I will be working with the Commission Office, news to Craig, but we will be, as we always, work with the Commission Office on posting the press releases and getting it on the internet and we will start our search for new Planning Commissioners. So if you know of any, anyone that's interested and I, I know that we replaced, or we filled a vacancy last fall, last December, so I probably, probably will also reach out to those candidates that we did not select and ask them if they'd like to reapply and make them aware of it. So, and seems like there was one other thing I was going to mention, but I can't remember now. Oh, yes, I remember. We hired Morris Forst, Forsting as our temporary code enforcement person. He's been working, he's been working for two weeks. And so he's been working with Kevin and David on the procedure, how we do code enforcement. He's helping us do some conditional use permit reviews. He's calling up conditional use permits that we have approved, you know, several, two years ago, asking them to meet them on the site and then reviewing the conditions of approval, which I think is very good for due diligence. I, I see our State's Attorney shaking her head that we're following up on conditional use permits that we have approved, making sure that they're meeting their conditions and reaching out to them as well if they have any other questions. So actually, three things to report, but I know that's.
Madam Chair, a new appointment to the Commission would just fill out Paul's term.
That's correct.
And so how, when does that term expire?
I believe the end of nineteen, so it's another year and a half, basically.
And then additionally, I would just make the comment that having code enforcement is, should help put neighbors at rest when, when we put a restriction on an applicant for a deal and, and the rules aren't followed, that's, that's bad, especially if there's no enforcement. So having enforcement is, helps all of us rest better.
I've known Mo Forsting for a long time, City Health Department for quite a few years. I think he's going to be a great hire for your office and I think his experience and background will definitely, he'll hit the ground running.
Yep, he's, he's been very helpful and I can, I, I have full confidence he's going to fit our needs because he's retired and so he has some flexibility to, you know, work on, you know, a Tuesday, Thursday, but if it's going to be pouring rain on Thursday, you know, we'll, we'll switch that around a little bit because I don't want to send someone out, you know, tromping through the mud, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Any other liaison reports? Chris Jofkarski? No, okay. I'll just say, some of you were aware of that I, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, some of you were aware that yesterday I went to a press release for Marcy's Law, which is vote yes on amendment Y, some changes to the last year's election where the constitutional amendment on Marcy's Law was approved and there's been some tweaks. It's been supported by both the Marcy's Law people who brought the changes to our constitution and also supported by the State's Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, and I threw our support behind it too. So just that you're aware of that. That's my little purple pin today is Marcy's Law.
So, just that you're aware of that, that's my little purple pin today, is Marcy's Law. Gerald?
I had a Fair Board meeting last week, and I also this morning met with Mark Krenz, our building supervisor, building maintenance supervisor. Just a couple updates on the fairgrounds. Mark has decided to fix the damage that we had from storms himself. He can do it because we have a significant deductible, if you will, and thinks he can do it for less than the deductible cost. Obviously, a great addition to our staff. He's working on the armory roof replacement, which actually started last week and going well, and the grandstand railing. He's also working on some asphalt removal and grading work and tying it into a storm sewer. The JDC parking lot, which will start this week or next, and then there's also some upgrades in the courthouse that he's been working on. He also, obviously, is a member of the jail expansion program and offering great advice for that. The other new thing that we're reading about is the Emerald Ash issue, and we have a lot of ash trees in the county, and we're going to try to do most of that work ourselves, but it's still not going to be inexpensive to do. And then the fairground also has some issues with the underground power and plumbing, and some air exchange issues with the expo building that he is coordinating, and then the emergency management building needs some tuck pointing and some parking patches and some interior improvements on a temporary basis until we decide what's going to happen to that facility. He obviously has taken on lots of additional responsibilities and has requests for a couple of additional costs, if you will, in next year's budget, but this year, he frankly has come in almost a hundred thousand dollars under budget with all of the work he's done himself, rather than contracting those things out. So, as we all know, he does an awesome job, and looking forward to hearing from him this summer in the budget process.
Great, excellent report. Commissioner Barth?
Just, Gerald, I happened to notice during the Aox Fire, when they, when they had drone surveillance of that fire, that it appears that the woods on the fairgrounds there on the southeast corner of the fairgrounds were on fire also. I wonder if you could ask Scott if there's a...
He did mention that. It's actually just a salvage location for some of the stuff that they get rid of, and it hadn't been moved yet, but I don't think it was anything significant.
Any additional questions, comments?
Report, I guess, if I could. The Triage Committee is their project, however you want to refer to it, I guess. We've been meeting quite frequently, several times a month in cases, cases with different members. Last week, Commissioner Hyburger talked to one of the local TV stations, and we did a presentation on National Stepping Up Day, and this month, or this, I don't know if it's monthly or weekly, NACO newspaper that we got, had an excellent article on that. If you haven't taken the time to read that article, and I think it'd be great public information for everybody to see, but very alive and active process going on right now with that, so we will, you'll be hearing more and more about it as time goes on, but Kerry Benz, I thought, did a fantastic job explaining it on the news report, and I want to thank KSFY for taking the time to make it their lead news, news on Wednesday night, last Wednesday.
Excellent. Additional comments? Okay, and as the mayor mentioned, I did have lunch with him last, last week and just talked about Triage Center and a few other things that the county is working on, the grant application that we have that we'll be submitting soon, so it was good conversation. Item number twenty-three is new businesses, are there any new business?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Barth?
As you know, we've had a, we're looking at changes with the Homeless Advisory Board, and I think it might be a time where we assess that program and see if its direction might be adjusted, and I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Any old business?
Any old business?
Old business? One of the reports filed was the Public Defender's Annual Report. Please take the time to look at it, there is a lot of information in there, but I really want to kind of call out our Public Defender's Office for doing a great job in this last year, the amount of work they do, when you look at some of their numbers, in five-year period, the number of cases opened is up twenty-five percent, and misdemeanors are only up nine percent, but our felonies are up eighty-five percent, and our mental illness and alcohol commitments are up a hundred and thirty-seven percent. Some very significant increases in some of these areas, and I'm not talking, you know, going from eighty-five to a hundred, I'm talking going from twelve hundred felonies to twenty-three hundred felonies that they are defending, so they, they're obviously busy, couldn't get here to take the time, but I wanted to really encourage everybody to take a look at that report, and even for the public to take a look at that report, what happens in Minnehaha County.
Craig?
Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Commissioner Karski, just so that all of you commissioners are aware, Tracy Smith from the Public Defender will be presenting that report here on June twelfth. The commission will not have a meeting on June fifth due to the primary election day.
Yep, that, what she's going to do on June twelfth is more the, the budget process versus this report and the detail that it is, so we decided we didn't want to get repetitive, I guess, so.
Okay, are there any additional old business with that? I'd look for a motion to adjourn into executive session immediately following the commission meeting for the purposes of South Dakota Fide Law one-dash-twenty-five-dash-two, one, and three.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, we are recessed.
Need a few minutes, or?
Yeah, just for me to sign, so a couple minutes.